Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And beginning to half of a fire department this year, maybe three quarters.
One-third.
One-third, sorry. That's right, one-third. It's always a pleasure to see all of you here. Let's, if we could all call the meeting to order at 6:32. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. If you all face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go on, Mr. Rusty.
Councilmember Cashra Lizita.
President, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lau is not going to be in attendance tonight. She had a conflict. Mayor Protem Karotsey.
Here.
Mayor Heffron.
Here.
Item three, presentation on the Fire Department Standard of Coverage Community Risk Assessment by consultant Kurt Ladapow with AP Triton.
I will hand this over to Chief Nigga in just one second. As council, some of you are aware, some of you may have been following, that in June of last year, we commissioned the standard of coverage and community risk assessment, and AP Triton was selected to do that work. They have been doing that work over the better part of last year. We got a small glimpse of this report in roughly November when we were evaluating the county initial study and whether to take next steps or not. So, a lot of this information will be very similar, but now it's in a final form to be presented to council. Over that, I will turn it over to Chief.
Chief, if I could just jump in here. Councilmember Lau did submit some questions to the chief, and I think those were answered. Mr. Rusty.
Yeah, some of those have been addressed. She does have some comments that she asked me to share at the end of the presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Chief Nigga.
Very good. Well, good evening, mayor, mayor Protem, and council. It brings me great joy to stand in front of you, in front of this governing body once again, as we look to put an exclamation point on extraordinary year that the Laverne Fire Department has traversed. As you recall, the city sought to better understand whether or not the department was deployed in a way that not only met the city's level of risk, but also whether or not the department was consistent with industry standard practices. In doing so, the consultant known as AP Triton was selected to analyze the vulnerabilities of the community, thereby providing the impartial contacts necessary to determine sufficient fire department deployment. This type of report was commissioned in June of 2021 with expectations of executing a well-known and widely-used analysis for police and fire department accountability. Known as a community risk analysis and a standard to cover, these studies are defined by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, otherwise known as CFAI, as the written policies and procedures establish the distribution and concentration of fixed and mobile resources of an organization based on the risk classification. Modern-day focuses not only identify the hazards, but also detail the ability to maintain and improve.
Can you check your microphones, see if it's actually loud?
So. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay. Modern-day focuses not only identify the hazards, but also detail the ability to maintain and approve and improve along with the dynamics of the community. As a result, the public we serve is not only made aware of our gaps in capability, but also provides opportunity for us to work with our elected officials in improving these deficiencies through a data-driven approach. Together, this is how we protect human life, our local economy, the environment, public confidence, and our continuity of operations. Upon my arrival, AP Triton had already begun data collection and subsequent anecdotal analysis. Concurrently, the department was in urgent need of sweeping changes to avoid a complete service delivery failure. In parallel with making these adjustments, we continued to work through the study as a new deployment model was implemented. Unfortunately, when the report was commissioned, the scope of work was outlined with the deployment prior to my arrival in mind. A significant portion of these studies is dependent on response data and incident reporting over a three-plus-year period, requiring us to exclude any opinion that we may or may not have been able to definitively conclude about the deployment we see before us today. Additionally, having switched communication centers and record management systems in the middle of the study period, we had been hampered by technical inability to collate some of the crucial data, as will be discussed in the coming presentation. All that said, it is imperative that all who seek to understand this study realize that although our current deployment is referenced throughout, the primary focus is where the department was prior to my arrival. Optimistically speaking, you will see that much of our downfalls have either already been rectified or will be in the coming months ahead. After AP Triton's presentation, I will further discuss where we are now relative to the findings and recommendations and where the department is headed post-analysis. Once again, I'd like to introduce seasoned retired fire chief and vice president of operations for AP Triton, Kurt Ladapow. And unfortunately, his team that he was going to bring with him is unavailable tonight, so it will be simply for presenting.
Thanks, chief. That took out the first page right there. Okay. I am accustomed to being able to see the PowerPoint. Will I be able to?
I think so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, manager.
Counselors, 121, here.
So, the chief actually hit several of the comments that I was going to make in my icebreaker, so to speak. So, I'll kind of pick it up from there. He mentioned some of the challenges with computer dispatch systems being changed midway through the process. Not necessarily midway through a process, but midway, when we look at the analysis, we typically look at three years for the deployment analysis, performance analysis, et cetera. We look at nine full years of natural fire incident reporting system to try to predict the future as much as we can to longer off your population, which that is also a challenge because there's two documents didn't agree with each other relative to population. So, yeah, when we got started, the chief hadn't taken the office yet. As soon as he hit the ground running, so to speak, he started pulling levers, twisting knobs, identifying challenges that were just starting to be unearthed through our analysis, and we had multiple, multiple conversations throughout the process. As a result, we decided with concurrence of the chief, and you heard this from me back in, when was it?
November.
November. God, this seems like it was yesterday, didn't it? Anyway, you heard this from me back in November. We felt it was important to put the project on hold, to give the chief an opportunity to really get his arm around stuff, and as well as help us through some of the data challenges that we were encumbering. When we talk about these studies, we talk about snapshot in time. The snapshot in time for us for the performance analysis was 2017 into '21. And those were some of the challenges. There were transitions made during that time. There were multiple systems that were changed, and you'll see some of the results in some of our recommendations. Next slide, please. Okay. So, the chief already mentioned one of the standards that we followed in these studies, the risk assessment standard to cover. The sixth edition, which is the edition that is currently in place, is extremely detailed relative to the risk piece, which is why you see so much language, so much reporting in the study on risk. And there's some very, very interesting statistics, even though that snapshot in time closed in '21. When we look at risk, we look at population, we look at diversity, we look at poverty levels, we look at median income, and we look at the age of the community, we look at traffic counts, et cetera. And some of that information actually makes its way into the charts and the graphs that make up part of the study. I often joke that before the sixth edition was published, when we were doing these in the fifth edition, the risk piece was only this big. Well, now it's this big, and rightly so, because it really helps us with our recommendations. So, description of the community, this is how your study is laid out. Community expectations, performance goals, you'll see a large section in there back in the appendix on the interviews. The community risk assessment is very detailed. The review of services provided per the snapshot, and the historical system performance, and then at the end, findings and recommendations. Next slide, please. So, it is a thorough overview and assessment of community risk and emergency response capability, apparatus and facilities for that snapshot in time. And as the chief has mentioned, there have been changes that have been ongoing. I'll share with you, that's not unusual. It is not unusual for an agency, as we start to develop and go back and forth and have these conversations on the analysis, to start implementing before we even, before the ink is dry. I was mentioning earlier, we're doing one in the northern California city, and they've already started implementing it, and hasn't been to council yet because they had budget authority to do some of it. We identified the service level, the identification of issues that are impeding, that were impeding at the time, performance, and then some recommendations for service delivery improvement. Now, again, I need to emphasize the snapshot in time, because the recommendations for service delivery improvement were based on the older service delivery model. Next slide, please. It is, it's interesting as we march down the road to the finish line, so to speak. Here are some of the changes that the chief implemented as the study progressed. Now, I shared with you, we had ongoing communications all the time. When he was noticing service issues, I'm going, yes, that's absolutely right on. The reopening of Station 3, as you saw from the report that I gave you back in November, right on. Excellent move from my perspective, particularly when you look at hazard up there, and we look at that again. Putting the tiller equipped in service, and you'll see why that, I believe, is reinforced when we look at some fire flow data in multi-story and multifamily. And then, the implementing the full-time ambulance operator program, hats off, there's some interesting dynamics going on in the fire service right now. And I'll share with you, back in the day when I was a chief of an advanced life support organization, back in those days, we would fight tooth and nail to keep our firefighters on the ambulances. But what we're finding in the evolution of the delivery model, that's not necessarily a good return on investment. And many, many, I actually appointed some organizations back to Chief Nigga and Isma, are going this route, moving the firefighter medics off of the ambulance, building a succession program utilizing single-role AOs, and freeing up firefighters to do the firefighter's job. So, hats off. Next slide, please. So, you live here, you already know the description of your community. At the time we did the study, you're classified as a suburban community. I seriously doubt that classification will change anytime soon. You have a resident population, and again, we had some dueling documents, so that's why I put the word "approximately" in there, 33,000, 9.4 square miles. Assess valuation at the time is 5.5 billion. I always find it interesting when we talk about assessed valuation, because assessed valuation, from my perspective, does not really look at the level of what's being protected by your fire service. In addition to that assessed valuation, they're protecting multiple sales tax generators, they're protecting multiple employers, and all those folks generate revenues within your community. So, if we were going to take that and add it all up, it'd probably be more than 5.5 billion. Full-service fire department, including ambulance transport, at the time of the study, two stacked fire stations, both stations have ALS, have ALS still, 36 full-time FTEs, your minimum staffing, 10 firefighters, one battalion chief. Next slide, please. Traditional fire protection for the most part. Second bullet, paramedic advanced life support ALS engine response, transported at the time, and you see my note, my tag on there, by one ALS ambulance. Now, you'd have two BLS ambulances, and you have three engines in service with paramedics. Special ops, tactical rescue, there's some language in here about coordination with the county on hazmat response. Inspections, code enforcement, chief and I had a lot of discussion about the fire marshal's role and some of the other changes he's making and the need for that. You'll see a recommendation in here for more community outreach, public education and prevention. Next slide, please. A little hard to see on here, but this is the service area. The red dots are the stations. All three stations are ALS, including the new staff of Station 3. Like I said, if you're familiar with the community, it's an interesting layout, particularly as you move towards the mountains. Next slide, please. So, community risk. Can't see the legend. But, so these are some highlights, this is your, it should be the population, yes, population density. No secret, as you move more towards Foothill Boulevard and below, the density increases, and you'll see the correlation between density and the activity of the fire department as we move forward. Go ahead. Right now, let's talk a little bit about risk. It's California, you may have earthquakes. It is interesting, as you read this section in the report, we talk about the faults that exist in the area, most of which are determined to be dormant, but we also walk back to some of the older earthquakes that we've experienced in the area. And we all know that just down the road and over the hill, everybody's just waiting for the big one to get along the San Andreas. So, you are in earthquake country. This lays out the risk, it's high, but the potential over the next 30 years for a seven and not anything beyond that. Of course, a seven is still pretty devastating. Go ahead. Next. So, this is the slide that, when our GIS analyst first presented it to me, and I knew at that time Station 3 was closed, obviously, the air got up on the back of my neck. It talks about in the report how a majority of the threat for wildland urban interface fire is actually from an incident from one of your neighbors rolling down into the city. However, once it gets here, you can see the potential. And to reinforce this potential, I go back to the Tubbs Fire up in Santa Rosa area, where it came out of the wildland, moved right into the developed area, and actually jumped the freeway and burned their Home Depot down. That's the potential, some of the potential you're seeing here, because these canyons, particularly here in San Anas, will serve as whips right down into the city. Next slide, please. Gold line. So, yeah, I love doing these projects, because every once, as a matter of fact, this happened during the interview process. We were doing the interview, and somebody brought up the gold line. And I said, oh, I'd heard about that. Now, I'm a little familiar with the transit system, but I had heard about gold line. So, I asked the question, where's the impact analysis, et cetera, and we got a copy of the update to the specific plan for Old Town. And as I started reading with that, I'm on the phone with my risk subject matter expert, and I'm on the phone with my GIS analyst. I said, y'all need to read this, because this is exciting stuff. It's very exciting for the city, but also, as I took a look at what was planned for that area, it's like, okay, this is going to increase people, it's going to increase risk, it's going to go vertical, which a lot of cities are going vertical right now, but the potential there, the positive impact. And then, when I spoke with the president of the college, they're really looking for a lot of positive impact out of the gold lines. I said, all right, stop, we're going to digest this. And that is just the, I believe that's the half-mile, but also, the gold line specific plan talks about a mile and a half. So, if you take that circle and you put it out a mile and a half, the positives, the positives for the city of Laverne are great. The impact on public safety, however, I'm not going to say it outweighs the positives, because it doesn't. It just means that the recommendation is watch very closely that development around that gold line and the pre-registered population. That's actually my recommendation. Next slide, please. Multifamily occupancies. So, it's a known fact that people and the movement of people generate incidents, generate requests for service. So, a residential facility, a residential home up, say, above the freeway, and then you start moving down into more dense areas, and you're going to see some call concentration maps. So, when you introduce multifamily housing into that mix, now you introduce additional hazards and additional risks, simply because you have more people in a condensed area. Concentration of individuals, concentration of families will generate service calls, in general, generate risks. Next slide, please. So, again, I want to reinforce, this is a high flight. I did not put all the maps and charts in here, because I figured you wanted to get out before midnight. I'm glad I didn't. So, fire flow. What is fire flow? Fire flow is the amount of gallons permitted it's going to take, projected to take, to extinguish a fire or mitigate a fire in a building. Now, we utilize the data that is gathered by ISO in their batch reports, and we take that data and we plot your high fire flow occupancies on the map. High fire flow equals labor. Takes the labor to put the fire out, takes the labor to handle the fire flow, and in some occasions, fire flow also demands aerial application of master stream appliances, hence the truck company. So, for those here today, or them, during the period, these are your high fire flow occupancies. You probably drive by them every day, some of them are commercial facilities, it's not, it's really not new to anybody, other than now we've plotted it on the map. Most of them are within Station 1's response footprint. Next, please. So, workload. And we were talking about workload, we were talking about call volume, we were talking about population at dinner, and it is interesting, and it will be really interesting to watch this in the future. So, we went back to 2017, things were pretty close, you started to see a drip, dip around 18, 19 leveled off, interesting enough, leveled off on EMS calls, but you had an uptick in fire. When you have a small percentage of fires, it doesn't take much to move chart. And then, 2020, 2020's the COVID year, we're seeing all kinds of anomalies when we do the analytics on the COVID year. As an example, if you're heavily dependent on tourism, those cities really, really struggle versus ones that generate sales tax, internet sales tax, et cetera. But from a call volume perspective, we did start to see a drop in EMS calls, but it's not shown here, in the COVID year, because people were staying home, people were taking care of each other, other than the COVID calls, and the traffic accidents dropped. So, why they dropped? Everybody was staying home, right? And then, we could only map out the first half of '21, you know. These studies normally take three to five months. And I would have loved to have got this one done in three to five months, but I don't believe, I do not believe it would have done the department and the city justice. I think waiting this long was of great value. Next slide, please. Monthly response workload. I found this interesting. You know, I do do, we do do studies in tourist areas such as the basin, Tahoe Basin, over on the coast, et cetera. And when we're not doing areas with a lot of tourism, we don't see a lot of fluctuation here. But you'll notice that your highest call volume months, January and December, and then you dip down around June. Now, I haven't been in the valley for quite a few years. You all probably know better than I do what's going on in those months. I'm sure the police chief has taken a look at what's going on in those months. But I go back to, human activity drives call volume for the most part, so something's going on there. Next, please. And this, bedroom community, with a lot of folks driving back and forth, right? So, Mondays and Thursdays are the busiest for call volumes here. Now, if I was going to guess, and my analyst isn't likely to guess, I would say that you've got a lot of folks traveling through here, or here, that work before camp. And you'll see some other, some other interesting dynamics that happen very early in the morning. Next, please. And this is it. So, normally, I stand up in front of elected officials and say, your call volume starts to ramp up about 8 o'clock in the morning, and then it starts to go down about 5 o'clock at night. Your call volume starts to ramp up around 5 o'clock in the morning, has two peaks. Peaks around that lunch hour, starts to drip back down, 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 and then peaks again around 6 o'clock in the evening, and then drifts down from there. So, for me, that's a very, very interesting peak, telling me a lot of commute stuff is going on here, but a lot of people are going to lunch. So, these maps are going to look pretty similar. And the reason they look similar is because over 70% of the requests for service during the study period are generated from requests for EMS. So, we're not, this map does not say there's nothing else going on in the city. It does say in your concentrated areas on your heavily-used roadways, and on some of your frequent flyers, frequent users, such as assistant care center, et cetera, you've got pockets of areas that are pretty busy. But across the board, there are calls going throughout the community. So, this is all incidents. This is fires, this is EMS, this is everything. Next one, please. This is nighttime. Not a lot of difference. So, your nighttime call concentration, you see some of it move off of the highways, and now we're looking at the multifamily residences, we're looking at some of the care centers, et cetera. Next map, please. And remember, I said there's not a lot of difference between the overall call concentration and the EMS response concentration that is strictly driven by the fact that 75, 76% of requests for service are EMS-based, and that's where they're coming from for the most part during the study period. Now, I will tell you, the firefighters in the audience most likely can tell you exactly where these are at, because they're going there multiple times. I believe there's also a comment within the study that talks about where your life-loss traffic accidents are, and you all live here, you know where they're at. It's on 210, it's on Foothill Boulevard, it's on the Arterios. Next, please. Travel times. Low qualifier, okay? This is computer modeling. Actually, hats off, because you all because they're going there multiple times. I believe there's also a comment within the study that talks about where your life loss traffic accidents are. And you all live here, you know where they're at. It's on 210, it's on Twidmore Boulevard, it's on the Arterios. Next, please. Travel times. Low qualifier, okay? This is computer modeling. Actually, hats off because you all beat the computer model most of the time. 90th percentile of your travel time beats the computer model. So the computer model takes into account stops, turns, changes of grade, et cetera. So this is the four-minute travel time for Station One. Now, if we were back up to the call concentration models, you're going to see that a majority of your high call concentration areas are being reached in four minutes or less initially by Station One. Next, please. Not to shortchange Station Two. This is the footprint for Station Two. Station Two's got a great runtime. They've got great access. And so their reach is really, really good. So this is the Station Two four-minute model. I go back to the data. The data says 90th, at the 90th percentile, the crews' travel time, and that's what this is, are less than four minutes. Next, please. It doesn't mean they're speeding, by the way, right? Station Three. Now, remember, when we started this study, Station Three was shut off. Station Three was built sitting here idle. This is the Station Three travel time. This is Station Three turned on with a four-minute footprint. Now, obviously, they're not going to, there's no roads in the open space so you don't see it covered. But now, I believe the next slide is very exciting. Maybe not exciting for everybody. So all three stations. And when you look at the city boundaries, all three stations have an incredible reach in four minutes or less in serving this community. That's why I was so excited when the chief told me that he figured out how to staff three. Go back and look in the risk, it's up there. So that's, this is just, this is only looking at the Laverne, at the Laverne staffing and facilities. Next, please. So effective response force. Effective response force is the number of apparatuses and firefighters it takes for an initial attack on a first alarm. This is with three closed. So if you can see the gradients, right down where it's red is where you've got some pretty good numbers. But it's so dependent on everything being perfect and absolutely, you'll see this mentioned multiple times, maybe one too many times in the report. I'll take care of that later, Chris. That is absolutely dependent on aid. And my terminology, automatic aid, automatically dispatched, simultaneous dispatch. However, when we did the study, it was more of a mutual aid. And it was an interesting read when I read that aid agreement. All right, so let's go to the next slide, please. This is with three staffed. Now, we're using the automatic aid, we're using the automatic aid engines or mutual aid engines as automatic aid engines for the model, okay? But now with three staffed, all three stations, the, it doesn't just, it doesn't just benefit within the city. It benefits your neighbors. Next slide, please. So I shared with you, I intentionally did not insert any more charts and graphs because I believe what we did back in November was rock solid. I was very pleased with the work that the crew was doing by then. But we continue to work past November and truly start to ground truth things, such as the findings, such as the recommendations. Have things changed since we concluded the study? Absolutely. Did the study take a year? I actually have to look that date up because I doubt that it would take that long. But I still say it was worth the investment of time. It was worth me going back to the team and asking them to do just a little bit more than I originally tasked them with. Fiscal findings. I have CPA on the team. If you want to talk about finance, I'll take the questions and take it back to Randy and he can answer. But he was very, for the most part, very complimentary. And so I'm not going to read these bullet for bullet. You've got purchasing policies, you've got reserve. Negative, if you will, if you want to call it a negative, you do not, at the time of the study, not have a formal capital asset replacement plan. And when I say a formal capital asset replacement plan, that means you've got the plan and it's funded. Next, please. When we look at the process, the process of getting people out the door, the process of delivering service to Mr. and Mrs. Smith, it's how long does it take to answer the call? How long does it take for the dispatcher or call taker, whichever the system is structured, to process the call and set the alarm in the station? And how long does it take for the crews to get on the rig and get going? We already know crews are doing very well on travel time. And they're really close to reaching the overall turnout time goal. A lot of times, all it takes to reach that goal right there is awareness. Taking a look at the data, studying the data. It's like a report card. In my case, I actually put, I tied timers into the CAD. I put timers over the doors. And once the crews became aware, our turnouts increased. Our turnout times increased. You have mutual aid, not simulta, this is stuff you already know. You've talked about it. The chief is working on it right now. As we stand here today, there is not a true automatic aid agreement in writing. Turnaround times for the hospital. This is a growing, growing, growing problem that we have. And it's interesting, it's not just a California problem. We call it wall time. You guys are very familiar with wall time. They're getting to the, they're getting to the hospital and they're holding them there because they have no vets. This is not a California phenomenon. We're doing projects right now, Oregon, Washington, and some of the other states. It is a reoccurring problem. Some agencies are actually sending basic level folks to the hospital to babysit the gurney so they can free up their RAs. Okay, current fire department responses are inadequate for a city this size. Remember, part of these findings were when three was closed. However, you're still struggling, we'll talk about it a little bit. The effective response force on initial structure alarms has been set by the department as 21 personnel for re-bridge. Without boundary drop, fully, full boundary drop, simultaneous dispatch, closest resource first, you're not going to be able to meet this ERF. And that's a concern I have. Depending, I've always had, as a fire professional, having to depend on a neighbor all the time for my initial alarms was always, it'll make you lose sleep at night. Next, please. So we have standards. The way the RFQ was written that we responded to, our scope of work identified the standards. And the way the RFQ was written, we were tasked with looking at those standards and comparing it to the way the organization operates. And right now, the organization does not utilize the Europe recommendations found in 1710. I've always said, as a former member of the League of California Cities, I've always said the decision on that standard is local control. It's up to you to take a look at the risk, make the decision and guidance, from a policy perspective, what you want your fire department to follow. As the city increases in size of structures, I'm going right back to the updated Old Town Specific Plan. Right there, it may be, you know, that multi-story, multifamily, mixed use. And as I read that plan, and it's really cool because the planners have been talking about this for years, right? Retail, commercial, whatever, on the bottom floor. And then we go up with mixed use, mixed use residential. Mixed use residential, such as senior housing, such as low-income housing, such as the buzzwords we've been hearing lately is worker housing, right? So as that starts to happen, it will put a strain on your public safety agencies, not just the fire department. Next, please. We talked about, you know, the chief kind of stepped the tone. We talked about some of the challenges that we have in the data collection phase. Changing vendors made it really difficult for us to get our arms around a common. It was the CAD, it was the fire records management system. It was data inputs. And you know, the saying's been around forever. Our vision, our vision out. We had some really good people on this, on this team. They worked very, very hard. You'll see some of the comments in there, trying to find the level ground, if you would, with the data. Some of these things, the chief has already corrected, like the CAD not tracking the chief officers on structure fires, a very, very important timestamp. And at the time, the department was not conducting outcome measures as to, that would indicate whether the changes made have achieved their purpose. Now, chief and I have talked about that a lot. I'm a data guy, a planner, I'm a data guy. I really like to have this, personally, I like to have this stuff in front of me. And I like to be able to share with the crews and the city council, obviously celebrate how good we're doing. Once you put this in place, which the chief is working on it, he'll be able to get a much better feel for how the organization's doing and show you your return on investment. Next, please. And then we have the other, the miscellaneous column, right? Community Risk Reduction Plan that identifies and prioritizes the community risk. I will share with you that there's a big move afoot, has been for the last few years, to evolve the Prevention Division, the Prevention Bureau, into more of a holistic approach. Community risk from a holistic approach perspective challenges everybody in the community, be it part of that prevention. Businesses, homeowners, residents, folks up in the wildland. All that is rolled into a community risk program. Station One, you've all been at Station One. I don't need to beat this up too much other than I believe this is critical at the moment. When we toured Station One, every nook and cranny has something in it. There's no room for expansion. And we're recommending expansion. We're recommending that you look at adding personnel at Station One and apparatus. I was talking with the chief the other day. Next time you guys get your ISO rating done, they're going to be tickled pink because you've got a reserve truck because that's negative points for not having it. Now I have to figure out where I'm going to park it. Administration. It's a multimillion-dollar corporation, just like the city. Multimillion-dollar corporations need officers, they need leaders, and they need admin support. Our world has become so complex with reporting and risk and billing. Return on investment, administrative staff. And you know, I've heard this, you've heard me say this a few times. Opening Station Three, see, this is retrospect. So when you guys opened Station Three, and I follow some of the stuff that gets posted by the crews and by the chief, it's already made a difference. Initial attack on a veg fire, automatic aid, not too far from the city limits. Station Three was there. Would not have happened a year ago. Next, please. This is part of how we, I'm shy about this because I know a lot of folks, a lot of our policymakers will be going down these findings and checking off, well, that's a million, that's two million, that's three million. Take a look at the staffing level for administrative support services. The chief has already started doing this. At the time of the study, it was glaring. When we did, when I came in real quick for a tour of the facilities, I'm going, well, I'm going to be making some recommendations. I already do it, I'm looking at the data. I don't know where they're going to go, okay? We already talked about performance outcomes and measures. It's a report card. I believe you'll be pleased when the chief's able to put that in place. Community-wide risk reduction plan, getting the entire community involved. It's not just the inspectors, it's not just the fire marshal, it's not just the engine companies. Whatever you do, don't shut down three. The hazard is too great, the outcome's been too positive. And renegotiate the agreement with LA County Fire to be a true automatic aid simultaneous dispatch agreement. Chief and I have already had some conversations on this. I know from the sounds of it, he's making great progress. I'm anxious to see the draft for free. Next slide, please. Now, here's the caveat that's actually in the study. And I feel this is important to spend just a couple of minutes on. If you're not able to negotiate and update that true automatic aid agreement, then it's important that you be able to posture yourself to handle the risk and at least handle an initial attack of a low-risk incident. So if you can't get the agreement, and by the way, I rarely recommend four O staffing. Here's the next one. Increase the staffing at Stations Two and Three by one firefighter per shift, revolting in four-person staffing. That will have a significant positive impact on addressing your risk, particularly during the initial attack on a fire. The AO program is new. The data that we had to work with, I wasn't able to get a really good feel for a pattern, for a staffing pattern. One piece of data says, well, you know, definitely busy enough for one 24-hour car. I don't know about two. But then I looked at the data again and I looked at the expanding wait times at the hospital. I go, well, maybe there is a need for two 24-hour cars. And now the question is, which is why I'm recommending you continue to evaluate the workload in the program, is to determine, are two 24-hour cars enough? Do you need a peak hour unit? What are you going to do if Pomona Valley or San Dimas community doesn't get a handle on their wall time issue? Next slide, please. I've, you know, I've commented on the Old Town Specific Plan. I think it's very exciting. Closely monitor that. My recommendation is, as that starts to come vertical and you start to see impact, you need to add an engine company down there, again, looking at risk, looking at initial attack. Because that station, the station's already busy. The station's already, yeah. Well, thank you. And it's going to get busier as that develops, as those developments take place. So I struggled with this next recommendation a bit. We went back and forth. My gut feeling when I toured Station One, oh, man. You need to go find three acres somewhere and build a new station. However, I do recognize that land is hard to come by. So I believe you should take a look at a new location and an architect for the purpose of modifying the existing station to maintain a high degree of safety. If you can't, then you should find another location. However, I will share with you, I had my analyst run a couple of models. One's in a really good location. If we move it one way or the other, we uncover pieces. So if I had a magic wand wand, I'd find you three acres away where it's at. I'd find you three acres right where it's at. But, and you know, the devil, as they say, is in the details. There's a hidden one in here. If you're going to re-engineer, if you're going to find a new facility, pay attention, you have some strong consider A and B for training. Going out of the area for training causes challenges for coverage. And we heard a lot about training as we were doing, as we were interviewing folks. Next, please. Next steps, chief?
Thank you. I'll leave now. Thank you. I really appreciate you. Come back again.
All right.
All right, so some more crews are rushing off to one of those female calls. Thanks, Kurt. So as you can see, this study is not only holistically comprehensive, but also crucial to the broader understanding of complexities of fire service. So where are we now? Since my appointment, we have successfully achieved the following. We have imminent, within the next two weeks, an entirely overhaul, auto-aided area with LA County Fire. As a result of months-long negotiations and reshaping of LVFT. Full-time deployment of both ambulances, utilizing a staffing program completely self-sufficient with its own revenue generation. We've reopened Station Three with a fire unit capable of responding to all emergencies. We've provided response equity to every citizen in the community, achieving a first-in-year response within four minutes. We've deployed a model providing increased firefighter paramedic availability for more critical calls. We have a full-time quick deployment for technical rescue and specialized fire tactics. We've created an internal succession ladder utilizing all ranks from ambulance operator all the way up to fire chief. We've increased our revenue projections 40-plus percent. We've fully staffed the department with some academy that's going through right now. So when we hit the floor here in the coming weeks, we'll be fully staffed department for the first time in quite some time. As a result of that, we will have reduced overtime dramatically. We've obtained a reserve point for operational continuity, as Kurt mentioned. That should be ready to go in August and the coming weeks as well. We've exponentially increased our contribution to the operational area, improving inter-agency relationships. We've implemented a full-time fire marshal to oversee a new community risk reduction plan and program. And we're currently implementing a new deputy chief of operations for daily oversight of personnel, tactics, policy, quality assurance, performance measurement, and regional relevance. As Kurt mentioned, performance measurement is crucial to our success. After all, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. Through better internal review, we intend to improve our response times and quarterly evaluate the successful outcomes of our actions. Moreover, it is important to strive for future adaptations where deficiencies are identified. And as we saw today, there were a few. Strategic planning is critical to any organization seeking excellence. What this report has indicated, there is a very real need to increase staffing based on the anticipated goal line growth, high-density housing potential, and additional commercial infrastructure. Stations Two and Three are staffed with three multifunction firefighters, whereas numerous underwriting laboratory and national institute and standards and technology studies indicate adding a fourth firefighter to those stations will reduce property loss, civilian and firefighter injury, and greatly decrease mortality and critical life-threatening article analysis. As call volumes increase with the growth of the city, the need for these additional firefighters will only be exacerbated. Now, in my many conversations with each of you, I have reiterated my philosophical beliefs that it's important for us to contribute to this greater need. I projected our revenues will continue to increase through better administrative accountability yet to be realized and through community facility districts already established. General fund impact is yet to be determined. However, there is little reality where the city's general fund won't be impacted in some respect. With that in mind, the immediate future before us will lead to a strategic plan where we collaboratively and constructively determine how we can ensure the city's risk vulnerabilities and public safety needs are being met now and in the future. I thank all of you for taking the time tonight to hear the study and truly seek to understand what it takes to best protect our citizens. And finally, I'm not bringing forth any action items for council consideration tonight. Rather, it is my intent to seek your acceptance of this study, thereby indicating your support for the future strategic planning utilizing these findings. Kurt and I stand, there need to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Lapp. How about, I think we should go to public comment first.
Can you hear if there are any questions? Also, initially?
Yeah. Any questions right now for chief or Mr. Lapp before we go to public comment?
May I have one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Great. Thank you, chief. Chief, uh, chief, we're trying. My question was, do we have any data from Azusa Monrovia that we can attain to see what the impact was when their goal line came in? And they saw, I'm sure they saw pretty positive. They saw an increase. I just don't know that.
We do not. It was not, I hate to say it, was not part of the scope. It certainly would be worthwhile diving into that.
Right.
Azusa and...
Azusa Monrovia are coming to my mind.
Yeah, so Azusa, yeah. Azusa'd have to come from the county.
Okay.
Monrovia still does their own thing.
Is they have their own car?
Yeah, Monrovia does. Yeah, yeah. So I think it's worthwhile to review. Wasn't part of this.
Sure.
It'd be a good model.
Yeah, it'd be a good model. I'd be interested in just asking the questions if somebody...
I've got a feeling our call for service is going to impact our amazing firefighters and our amazing law enforcement police officers regarding the responses to whether it's ALS, BLS, or regular fires.
Absolutely. The comparison has to be made, though, is the development, was the planned development around their expansion similar to yours? Other words, we're only looking at trips. In fact, we're only looking at trips being generated, folks driving in, getting on the goal line, getting off. But if they had a similar development, that would be an interesting reveal.
Well, getting on, getting off is, I understand it, but I'm more concerned about the homeless population that's going to come in and flex it and put a lot of burden on our firefighters and police. So I just didn't know if you had it. I'm not, I can definitely find it. I could talk to you later about it. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I'd even go a little bit further. And I know that there's some, at least conceptual development that's out there that's being analyzed. It's not any farther than that. But, I mean, you're, realistically speaking, multi-story, high-density housing, varying levels of socioeconomic status. Those types of buzzwords impact both the police and fire departments heavily. And that's not only statistics, but it's also my 20-plus-year experience in this job as well.
Thank you, Cash.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Just to comment on that one, it has made a difference in the communities. It has stressed their systems. I know for a fact, being on the council governments, there is a stress to that. But that's something that we will have to address. And we've already talked about it lengthly as far as our specific plan, knowing that there's going to be an issue. And we're going to have to ramp up our services to make sure that we take care of that. Hopefully, there's other things in place for the mentally ill and the drug abuse situation before we get to that point. Let's hope. Any other questions? Did you want to, Councilor Lau, or are you going to wait till after?
We'll have more comments, so I'll hold those till the end.
Okay. Then we will open up public comment right now. Is there anybody out in public comment who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, do we have anybody calling in? We're by ourselves tonight. Then we'll close public comment. We'll bring it up to the desk. Councilor Crosby, or Mayor Pro Tim Crosby. Excuse me, that's the second meeting.
Thank you.
One question on the wall time. Has it been reduced since we started our ambulance operators? Do they, and this is maybe just, it's a form of operations as well. Do the ambulance operators then stay when our, to release our firefighters and paramedics back to the city?
Sure. So from what I've been hearing since our ambulance operating has been in service, it seems to be relatively consistent to me that our, the wall times have been consistent in the amount of time that's happening and for how long. The benefit that we're experiencing now is that it's not our multifunction firefighter paramedics being tied up at the hospitals. Depending on the call. If it's a BLS call or something that our paramedics felt comfortable sending to the hospital with that lower level care, or EMTs, then they do that. From almost day one that that program's been in place, I have heard repeatedly of times where our ambulance has been stuck at the hospital for two or three hours or even...
But does that mean our, and that's why I'm trying, that means our EMTs that are not on ambulances, right, they are stuck at the hospital as well?
The EMTs are, those are our single-function non-firefighters.
Yes.
Correct.
They're stuck at the hospital, but the rest of our truck might be back in the service when before...
Correct.
The truck was stuck at the wall as well.
Correct. Assuming it's not an ALS transport where our paramedics have to follow. So typically, unless the paramedics are alleviated of that care, they would have to leave with the patient.
That's with patient on the wall. That was my question. I didn't know. If we got there, we could leave our ambulance. But no, it's because of higher functioning and the paramedics need to stay there with them.
Sure.
That's there. That's why.
Unless something's changed since I've been in the field, our paramedics are still responsible until they're officially alleviated of that. The difference between what's happening now and prior was it was always our firefighter paramedics there. Whereas now, we've been able to separate those out and send those lower-acuity calls off of the EMTs. So we've had our paramedics more readily available in the city who also happen to be firefighters.
Sorry to dig down so far in the weeds, but that just helps me...
Sure.
Know where our guys are and what's the issues why we need someone to do so. Appreciate that.
You know, and I can tell you, like Kurt mentioned, the whole situation surrounding ambulance transport is quite complex and it's getting very, very, almost contentious out there. The private ambulance sector, the for-profit sector. Good, bad, or indifferent. I can't speak to how big or small the costs that they are, but I can speak to this county that there's been a lot of issues with extended response times or just, quite frankly, inavailability of ambulances. So not only, we've been able to kind of control that area a little bit more in our own city because we have our own ambulances, but we've been actually able to help out our partners around us as well, which has been very helpful to County Fire. I would say at least once a week at this point, if not more than that, we've been sending ambulances into clear months and the uncertain moment.
Do we get help built back on that? Because I are...
President, we have an agreement. When I first got here and we implemented this AO program, we worked out a mutual agreement with Care Ambulance because we needed them for search capacity. And part of that was that we would, whatever calls we ran, we would handle that building component.
And last question, though. On the report that you sent us, I know the presentation is, thank you so much. You did an amazing job. Really appreciate that. It was a more condensed version. There was a recommendation that, I don't see, that it made here. It was on the capital replacement plan. Is that, I know that was part of the whole package, but not on the presentation.
You're talking about this presentation?
Yes.
So, sorry. Yeah. So Kurt mentioned that those were primarily highlights that you presented.
Yes, no, that's right.
The capital replacement program, interestingly enough, the fire department I started at, we did everything in house. Our little capital, it was fire needs to be taken from that, fire apparatus. In my previous city where I came from, that was all handled entirely by public works. It's almost kind of a hybrid of that here, where the fire department has vehicle replacement funding that is generated from administrative fees and things that are generated external to the general fund. Although Public Works handles all of our light vehicle replacement, historically, the fire department has funded and set forth the times to replace that equipment. When I got here, Sean Michael, Public Works Director, pretty quickly presented to me of the sort of entire fleet and the years that those have been replaced. We weren't able to determine how we got to those dates. I can only assume that at some point there was a conversation from previous Public Works Directors and somebody from Fire to say, here's the years that we're aiming for. What we were talking about earlier is the semantics of having a policy in place, something written down on paper is absent. So we don't have anything that explicitly states this 15 years now out the door of fire insurance or whatever the case may be, which is what the NFT standard would be for a fire. And then ultimately, having that amortize our progression leading up to the time that's timing about that check for whatever it is, $800,000.
A lot more later on.
Definitely. And I would say that at this point, we've been very fortunate because we've been able to, our mechanisms that have been set up in the past have ensured that the money in those accounts was there when we needed to. Like I spoke to you when I first got here, we have really good equipment. We've got some stuff that needs to be, that's coming up on its replacement. We have a fire engine being built in Wisconsin right now to replace one of our oldest in the fleet. But in my experience, I'd say we have a pretty good field of equipment. We have to keep that going, of course. But when you look at a study like this, it's important to, you know, make sure all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted, making sure that, you know, all of those semantics are in place. And when you look at it from a, you know, an outline perspective, we're just missing the policy.
Thank you. And that's why I just saw it missing. And I know it was only highlights, but saw that one really piece missing. And I know that we have great equipment. And you've said that to me multiple times of coming from other departments and coming to Laverne. And so pleased of what you came to. And thank the people before you of what was left and where we're at. So really appreciate it. And thank you, sir, for your presentation as well.
Councilor Johnson?
This is fairly new to me, being a new member of the council. This is new to me, being a new member of the council. But I'm glad to see everything that has been done and the work that we still need to do to figure out how to fund this and find or create property somehow to make all this happen. But looking forward to the challenge. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Cash?
Thank you again. I remember last year when we had the presentation. And I remember when the city council said, hey, we want to keep our firefighters. I want to keep our firefighters happy and strong, okay? And I want to know now what step two is. How are we going to take care of it? Just like the good mayor said last time when we elected to keep our firefighters and our fire department, what do we, now let's fund this. So I'm here to fund it. I'm here to do what we can and make it right. And I'm here to protect our citizens protect our citizens from the known and unknown. So I'm looking forward to that, and I hope you hear the same comments, my friend. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Cash. You had lots of whining.
Yes, thank you. As I stated, she is unable to attend the study session due to conflict, but has reviewed the SOC in its entirety and met with Chief Nick in person to go over the same and identify the following points. One of those is a preamble should be included that clarifies the time work commenced and the preparation of the SOC and acknowledge that it is a snapshot in time and does not necessarily encompass all the changes that have taken place since the initial work was on this document. Clarify the findings to highlight what has already been accomplished, what is in progress, and what not yet been started. Make cost and savings sections so that it is clear where costs and savings are or are not occurring. Determine whether staff time can be quantified, and if possible, provide a quantity slash cost to include that staff time may not mean, may mean overtime hours or hiring of personnel. And that the SOC underscores the importance of data in order to measure performance and identity, areas of excellence, and improvement. Additional work towards ensuring that data is accurately and timely collected and evaluated is imperative to the ongoing success of the department and the services that it provides. It is important to remember that prior to hiring Chief Nick, many changes were on hold pending the hiring of a permanent chief, as it's not in the interim chief purview to make changes that will affect the ability for a permanent chief to grow and develop in a department in a sustainable and meaningful way. With the hiring of Chief Nick, a number of findings and recommendations noted by the SOC have already been implemented or are in the process of being implemented, resulting in a better, improved services to our community as well as better morale for the department. The data collected and assessed by AP Triton confirms that we are moving in the right direction, backed by facts and figures and not anecdotal evidence. I am in support of utilizing the SOC as part of the foundation for moving forward in our strategic and multi-year planning. The information received today will help us identify and prioritize opportunities, excuse me, and challenges, and thoughtfully make any requisite changes for improvements in the ways that are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the community and our employees. Lastly, thank you to AP Triton for compiling and analyzing the information to date, and to the stakeholders that participated in providing feedback. Much gratitude and kudos to Chief Nick, the fire department, and all city staff and their roles on the ongoing evaluation of our fire department and its performance and the furtherance of continuous improvement of the services to our residents and community.
Actually, I want to thank Mr. Lampard, he's a great, I will admit that I was a little frustrated at first when I talked to the chief today, and it, because of the fact that a lot of the matrix were not on Station 3 and it wasn't in effect, so, and then as I was, as I read through the whole pack, and I'm going, oh, well, that's, if I can fill that one out, you know, throw this one out. But I think, I really do appreciate this, as Counselor Lau and everybody stated on the council, and Mayor Pro Tim. And the most important thing is, is that, first of all, as you've been working on, Chief, the protection of our staff, NFPA standards must be, at least try to be reached, a close goal to that. I know that sometimes it's in the clouds, but it has to do with protecting our staff but also protecting the residents. Also, the quarters that they're living in, which we had a discussion about, I'm very concerned about the exhaust systems, make sure we get those for the laterals and the drive-throughs, to make sure that it's safe for our employees to have a safe working place. Make sure, and I know you're working on that also. Also, another one was the fact that Station 1 is kind of outlandish useful, and so obviously that's going to be one contention we need to look at, it's going to be a cost factor, but whether we move it or whether we construct new around it, I think we need to really look at that also. And each station, and also each Station 3, Station 1, Station 2, to make sure that we, you know, but then the budget, which I know you're doing, to make sure that they, they're a safe place for our employees to stay and for people to visit also. But I think one of the biggest ones, too, another big one was the hydrant testing. I know that was a little thing that was mentioned in there. If we don't have a good hydrant system, we don't have good water flow, we're going to be really in a big hot mess, and I think that's, I'm sure that you're on top of that too, to make sure that we have Public Works between you and Public Works, to make sure that we have the flow to put fires out, is very important. And the other one is the ISO rating. Make sure our ISO rating is low, and that has to do with all the implementing that you're doing right now. And I do appreciate what you've done so far. Our training program is going to be probably one of the best in the industry here, and I think there's going to be other agencies going to be extremely jealous and emulating what we do, and I couldn't be happier about that. It's been a long road. Our equipment is much better than some. I see the audited demands, and I know that we're purchasing equipment, we're purchasing CBA bottle, the new tank system, I know that we're going to some new tanks and some new headgear and things like that. I see the uniforms, I see a lot of the equipment, radios that come through there that, and the, a lot of the equipment that they use, a lot of the first-aid stuff has been replenished properly, and it's all good stuff, and I do appreciate that. But you're also looking at the fact that you're looking at reality as far as what this costs to the community, and you're looking for every single aspect of repayment, charges, your new system, your charges that you put on, your fee structure was, that's one of the first ones. And then I think the top one is our automated aid agreement with Los Angeles County, and it sounds like you're very close to that. Once we do that, I think we're going to be, along with the NFPA standards, we're going to be a premier fire department, be able to assist L.A. County, and they're going to come to us, and I think that's wonderful, so. And as we grow, we need to grow, and as we grow, we must add more employees, and that's something that we all need to pay attention to. As I stated, we have our own fire department, and we will keep it our own fire department, and that costs money, and I'm sure that you'll find the best ways to find that money for us to be able to afford a great fire department, keep our employees safe, and also keep our citizens. And just a little catcher, since Station 3 has been open, my next-door neighbor's was, had a heart attack, and because of the immediate response by LDFD, and also at the hospital, and also their cath lab, they saved that individual. And also, we had a structure where I think a car went through a structure, and they were able to get the people out safely, and we've had a small brush fire on Wheeler Avenue, but since Station 3 has been open, it completes that necklace of protection for our residents, and it also protects our employees because they've got support behind them, so I really appreciate it. I guess what I'm trying to tell you is keep moving forward, we're really happy, and, but again, thank you for the study. Kurt, I really appreciate that. Chief Nick, I think you've probably got your marching papers to do what you need to do and continue on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just want to back to Station 1 because I know my police chief is sitting over there.
Yes.
Stand up and say, yes, we need to do something about that, just as a reminder.
You need room there to more?
We did talk in the preliminary budget study session about that being a priority that's been identified not only by police and fire, but Public Works as well, so that is something that you will need to wrestle with over the next six months or so. I think that might be an appropriate individual strategic plan item as to, do we keep it in its current location, do we find another location, do we modify what's there, do we tear it down and build something new? That building has existed for the better part of close to thirty years now, if not more, and we've kind of added on, we've moved around, but we've kind of reached maximum capacity with the footprint that's there today. So that is something that has been identified, probably doing a needs analysis, a space analysis, as well as engaging an architect for some of that is probably an appropriate step outside of the strategic plan that the department is going to do, because I think it touches a lot more than just fire.
Well, Mr. Rusty, sorry to cut you off, but yeah, I took a tour of that facility, took a tour of the facility, because I've known since nineteen ninety-four as a police cadet, and it's changed dramatically. I mean, it's great to see people so positive and working there, but you know what, we should have people working in our closet. That is extremely unacceptable. You know what I mean? I mean, come on. Anyhow, but yeah, I took a tour of that facility, and I look forward to some really good things in the future.
That's a very good point, and Chief, I do agree, we, maybe our brothers and sisters over at the University of Laverne would give us a nice piece of property to kind of scoot ourselves over, build it first, then move it over, so. I was talking to Senior Manager Rusty about that, because we have been generous in the past with fields and things like that, that maybe we could make an agreement to, there's a need to be done, there's no question about it. And Station 2, we need to do something there because we're cramped in there, and if we add staff to the other, it's not going to be able to go in there. And Station 3, although it's a state-of-the-art, it's got some issues that I'm sure you're addressing too, but a lot of stuff's old here in Laverne, but we need to do that, and we need to plan ahead and put money ahead for that. Is there any comments or? Kurt, did you introduce that young lady next to you? Because I get in trouble when I don't introduce someone when I'm in the room.
Sometimes she gets upset when I do.
No, that's okay, you need to. She puts up with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those of you who were on the interview, as you heard me refer to the fact that Gail and I are a team, and she was off-camera during the interviews, our desks are basically in an L. So this is my wife, Gail. I insisted that she come down here, because I wanted her to see the city, I wanted her to meet you folks. So, and without Gail, I'll do this.
I know she's also keeping you on track. My wife does all the time, she gives me that look, that real dirty look, like, move it. Anyway, thank you very much, and welcome, and Chief, yes?
I can say one more thing, it's been a rough road to get to this point, I want to acknowledge the fact that, I mentioned that we're very close to being fully staffed. Starting in January, when our personnel jumped on that second ambulance, to get those revenues going and better serve the city, all the way up to where we're at now, our personnel have really stepped up. I work in week home shifts or more, ten days in a row, and I'm quite impressed, and I think there's a support to acknowledge that, and credit where credit is due, they really helped the fire department down until we're not to this point, so I want to make sure we acknowledge that. As it relates to the public safety building, our police partners have been fantastic, and we've been trying to make it work as best as possible, their poor dispatchers are sitting in a conference room right now, making it work. We both have personnel in closets, and it's not, it's not ideal, but we're making it work right now. I know that we're doing our best to cost recover everywhere that we can, and I know that PD's a little more hamstrung than the fire department is in that respect, but we certainly look to contribute to that problem as well and work with the city in that strategic plan. On a final note, I do intend to, I'm hearing that it sounds like you support moving forward with that strategic plan based off of the findings in this report, considering the fact that AP Triton did in fact do this report, the years' worth of analysis, I find it will allow them to help with that strategic plan as well.
Now, I think that's something that we need to think and keep on the books as far as every four or five years, as stated, to, you know, just capture that, and making sure that we capture all the material and all the information, so we have some really good data this time to move forward. But I also want to say that, as we all know, it's been a rough road, and I think our staff has been doing an exceptional job, but I think we hired the right fire chief, and you hired the right people in order to make it function well, and I think that's extremely important, because a well-run fire department will be a cost-effective fire department, a safe fire department, and the same as our police has been running all side, we run a tight ship, and I do appreciate it, believe me, it's been a rough road, and we are out, and I can see the trees, the woods now, and I think that we're moving ahead in the right direction, so. I think I can speak for everyone here, you have our support, so, thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate Chief Flores for supporting us tonight, and I'm always liable to hear from anybody who has any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. With that, thank you, everybody. Thank you, fire personnel, thank you, Chief Flores, Chief Nick. I close meeting at eight, was it seven, seven fifty, our next scheduled meeting is five thirty for a, for a study session, Will, Missouri, Madison. Thank you. Thank you all.